We will now reconvene.
How you doing, sir? Sorry to give a chance to play. You had any questions?
I have a question about the, uh...
Okay, we will now reconvene the meeting. So, again, we ask all commissioners to please return so that we may continue business. So, we're gonna go ahead and move forward now. We ask all commissioners to please return to the daisies. So, our next item is still in the planning and zoning area, and it is the public hearing for COMP AM 1913. Jerry Greer requesting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for the property located at 1018 Hampton Locust Grove Road, and the request is to amend the future land use map designation from rural residential to commercial in District 1. And we invite up Mr. Stacy Jordan-Rutisil for that presentation.
Good evening, Chair Wood.
Good evening.
Commissioners, the item before you tonight, much like the previous, is an associated hearing, and after the vote, there'll be the hearing for the rezoning. This subject property is located on the southeast corner of Hampton Locust Grove Road and Rocky Creek Road. This property is zoned RA, residential agricultural, much like the other properties in this area. The rezoning, excuse me, the RA zoning is consistent with the character of the area already. The future land use map calls for rural residential for this area. So, this sage green area indicates rural residential, and you can see that the character of this area, and indeed, the county's plan, is for this area to remain rural and residential. The applicant's associated request is for rezoning from RA to C2, and that requires the applicant to request this associated future land use map amendment from rural residential to commercial. So, that's how we got to this place here. Staff has evaluated the applicant's request. We have noted certain things. For example, currently, the applicant's request is not supported by the future land use map for any part of the subject property. We've noted the future community map, which is located on Page 2 of your staff report. The red arrow indicates this rural area on the future community map, which has informed our future land use map. So, the trends for this immediate area don't seem to point to development for the subject property. We've noted that the subject property is located within a protected watershed, and as will be brought out further in the next hearing, a portion of the subject property is actually within the critical area of the protected watershed. We've noted, and again, this will be brought out further in our next hearing, but we've noted that the concept plan shows that 55 percent, in other words, most of the proposed development would be impervious surface. We've also noted that, according to the concept plan, that the buffers would need to be reduced administratively, from a 40-foot buffer to a 20-foot buffer with certain stipulations, and we've noted that that approval can be handled administratively without any public hearing whatsoever. So, staff has considered the applicant's request. We do recommend denial of the applicant's request. The zoning advisory board held a hearing on January the 9th and agreed with the staff recommendation, and so the zoning advisory board recommends denial of the applicant's request, and I'd be pleased to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Are there any comments before the public hearing? Okay, so at this time, we'll welcome up those who wishing to speak in favor of the denial that has been on the table. I guess am I stating that right, or just a public hearing?
In favor of the request.
In favor of the request, thank you. Okay, so, yes, the ZAB and staff recommended deny, but those wishing to speak in favor of the request by the applicant, please come forward now, including the applicant. So, thank you.
Good evening, Chairman.
Good evening.
My name is Jerry Greer, and I'm the owner of the property, and I'm the one who's requesting the rezoning. I think it's important that I share a little information with you as we get started. Uh... Is the light on? Yes. Okay. This is the original property I bought in the early 1990s. The property then had a dirt, Rocky Creek Road was a dirt road. Excuse me, thank you. Had well, septic tank, there was no sewer or other services in the area. Along with the other people on Rocky Creek Road gave up right of way for it to be paved. I had a well here, 75-foot drill well, which was taken with some subsequent takings of property there. Next, this is what we have currently, and that's not a very big picture, but the house that I have associate is located here. There's a, I've had to give up all sorts of easements and right of ways here, and a considerable amount of property here to put turn lanes and to widen Rocky Creek Road at this high traffic intersection. I also provided a permanent easement here, which I'll get to in just a moment. And the reason for it was to take, give a problem I have with the property. I've got a serious flooding problem that was created by Henry County when they paved that road. This is a picture. Let me get this out of here. That's a, this is a driveway going to the house that I have there. You'll note that the road turns, or is higher, the elevation here, when they did the widening, they raised the elevation of the road here to Ford. The driveway was paved down to the ditches the water flowed off as it normally would. They turned the water back on the property. I was given, I gave the county, and this is a picture of the house, excuse me, showing how the water ponds going in, okay? Here's another picture from just a couple of weeks ago. You see it, how the water ponds there, where the county was giving the right of way when they, or a permanent easement to put a flume to take that water away from the house, which they, if they've got around to it, my calls have all been neglected. They virtually destroyed my access to the property. In addition to that, in addition to it, you have all the setbacks and buffers that we keep discussing. You'll look very closely here. The sideline now runs through the house that I have on that property. It gets two bedrooms, a bath, and a portion of the back porch. You've literally made the property, rented it useless for residential purposes, and it being in a high-traffic intersection, it doesn't lend itself to residential use. It's better suited for commercial residential, or something that can benefit the community. It's gonna be an eyesore as long as it's there, and I'm not, I can't change it. I've already remodeled the house twice. Now you put it in utter ruins. What we're proposing... Pardon me for being kind of fumbling here. Okay. This is what we're proposing for the intersection, realizing all the set, now, the buffers that Stacy's already mentioned, administratively, all the buffer problems we've got can be resolved. And when it comes to the runoff or the water, we've got provisions here for underground detention to take care of that excess water that comes off of there. There's not gonna be any excess flooding. I know we're concerned about impervious areas, and, but, with the underground detention, that negates the underground, the underground detention negates the problem. I might add, and I had a picture, and I can't seem to locate it, if we need more pervious area, if you go over to the city of Hampton and look at their police station over there, you'll find that they have ucoos of parking there. It's pervious stones that are pavements. It allows the rain to fall, and it falls right through there, and it soaks into the ground, just like in a regular rainstorm. There's other ways to deal with the problem. And I'll go back now and let you know that this property's sewered. The county offered me a little assistance.
Pervious stones.
Thank you, I'm sorry. That's the impervious papers that you'll find over at the police station in Hampton. Works very good. Takes care of it. That's pervious, meaning it'll take the water. Impervious means it's gonna runoff, and we've, again, we've got the underground detention. When it comes to the 500-foot critical buffer, no problem with that. That buffer can be reduced. It's there because of septic tanks, and creating large impervious areas like industrial. When you, I spoke with the water authority, and I don't, when they're not gonna go in and do some massive something, but if you've got a septic tank there where it's within 500 feet of that protected area, you've got a problem. They've got a problem. I've got a problem. I don't want it polluting my drinking water. And I might add, sewers on the property, only property on that side of the road where there is sewer. The county ran a main from the school complex all the way down into my property across the road there, all the way down to the, to the Toddlaugue Bridge, and, um... This may help some. Excuse me. There's a property, subject property here, this sewer that's ran all the way down through here from the school complex, comes down, comes across Rocky Creek Road to here, comes over and services my property, is the only property being serviced by sewer on the south side of Rocky Creek Road. Also gave right of way to come across my property all the way down to here to put in a sewer lift station. This property, by the way, is owned R4. That allows the three houses, over three houses per acre. That's not agricultural residential. Here's your school complex. This is within 1,000 feet of the subject property. This property here beside the school complex is zoned mixed-use and commercial. It's actually cut out and planted about a hun, close to 1,000 acres, and pushed right into that agricultural residential area. Folks, this is not in compliance. Now, if I may, I'll allow Mr. Maxwell to offer some additional comments, if I may.
Good evening. I'll try to be brief. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Gil Maxwell. I'm the litigation attorney that does both civil and criminal litigation. Obviously, I'm not used to coming down here, and Mr. Greer wanted me to look at this with a new set of eyes. And one thing I noticed, and it's been very informative, and I, by the way, compliment you on your diligence, it's been a wonderful experience for me, but in reference to Item 10C, when the attorney was up here talking about, and the county had recommended approval of both the rezoning and the redesignation in accordance with the, or the amendment of the land use plan, not one single aspect of their argument differs from ours. Like them, we have a widened street, Locust Grove Hampton Road. Like them, we have an enlarged intersection. Like them, we have proximity of shopping areas and other areas on either side, but the one thing that was notably missing in the presentation when the county recommended approval was a similar map showing residential use of property or rural use of property. They kind of pick and chose to show that in reference to my client's request, but failed to do so for Kellytown. And here is the point, with the exception of their inability or unwillingness to consult with the water authority beforehand and otherwise arranged to be tapped into the county, that was the primary reason you all denied their application. We are tied in. We paid the money at our expense, and for that reason alone, because there's really no differentiation between their argument and ours, this should be approved. Now, counsel before me had indicated that there's an inextricable intertwining of both the application for rezoning and the amendment of the comprehensive land plan. Our request differs in no respect, none whatsoever, the same parameters that are there, the widening of the street, the intersection, the proximity of other commercial uses. The only difference is their request was amendment of the designation from rural residential to mixed-use. Ours is requesting rural residential to commercial.
Time has expired.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Okay, so, we thank you for that, for those who came to speak in favor. So, at this time, there would be a collective time of 10 minutes for those wishing to speak in opposition. So, would you please come forward now, please? These are those that are against the requests.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is Shannon Griffin, and I reside at 1220 Rocky Creek Road. And tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of my family and the 64 signatures that I have on the petition for presentation for you this evening, and also those I was unable to meet with prior to this meeting. We, the residents of Rocky Creek and Hampton Locust Grove Road of the area, are thrilled to hear about the recent approval for county staff to produce an ordinance that would put a limit on small box discount stores in Henry County. As some of you have mentioned, those stores have inundated our county, have hurt the county's property value, and, as a result, hindered the higher-end businesses from opening up in Henry County. Most compelling in this move was presented as a way to protect the property values of residents. Changing this property to commercial, which is definitely inconsistent with the character of our area, would surely have a negative impact on our property values and quality of life. This is a rural area of single-family homes with acreage. Many of the properties are used for farming and livestock. I, myself, have a small farm with rescue animals. We are not a sidewalk community where residents want to walk to stores. We are a rural area and want to keep it that way. Based on the future land map, this is zoned RA and is planned to remain RA. The applicant has stated that Hampton is underserved by consumer and durable goods sales establishments. By no means are we underserved. We have the conveniences of grocery, gas, fast food, full-service restaurants, fast food restaurants, veterinarian offices, medical facilities, laundry facilities, and even if we needed a Dollar General, we have one three miles from the subject property. This property is on a corner lot. The intersection of Rocky Creek Road and Hampton Locust Grove Road has proven to be dangerous, even with a traffic light. Why we would consider more traffic for our residents, schools, and our young drivers, we don't understand. Statistics have proven that retail establishments in rural areas are a prime target for crime. If you build it, crime will come. Planning and zoning has already requested this case be denied. The property does not meet the criteria for commercial zoning and cannot meet the ULDC requirements to provide separation between commercial and residential uses. Allowing commercial use would disregard the current minimum buffer requirements and increase the impervious surface, which are in place to protect the neighboring residents and our drinking water. Lastly, the property in question and the adjacent property at 976 Hampton Locust Grove Road, also owned by the applicant, are both listed as commercial. The agents listing clearly state the type as commercial, along with the many different business types available. These are both RA properties. While we know it's not illegal to falsely advertise, it is certainly unethical. We have also received reliable confirmation from a professional source that the property at 976 Hampton Locust Grove Road is currently under contract for a Dollar General store. That being said, as the old saying goes, the applicant and his agent are definitely putting the cart before the horse and seem confident on the final ruling of this hearing. We, opposed residents, are respectfully asking that no zoning change occur on this parcel. I do have a copy of our signed petition, if you would like that, for your reference.
Okay, you can give that to our county clerk, and we'll invite up the next person as well. Thank you.
Hi, Chair members. My name's Tina Brooks. My husband, Jimmy Brooks, live at 1170 Rocky Creek Road. We're less than 1,000 mile, 1,000 feet, I'm sorry, from the property in question. We bought our home in, we bought the property in 86 and built the home in 88. We're longtime citizens of Henry County. One thing I want to make a point of is this property is in District 1, but the community around this also involves District 2 also, because it's right on the dividing line. I think of Rocky Creek as the dividing line. This is a rural area of single-family homes where acreage, we are not a small cluster of homes. This, you will see cows, horses, tractors, wildlife, and it's a very rare site in Henry County, and we want to keep it that way. That's why most of the people that live in that area, that's why we moved there. These people that, the families that live in this community are not transient families. We have, we are longtime there. You rarely see a house for sale in this area, and we want to, people are there for a reason, and we want to keep it rural. If you see that pretty vision of farmlands, and now imagine a Dollar General in the center of that, makes you cringe. It makes everybody in our neighborhood cringe to think that might come. One thing I want to point out is that I think the applicant's representation said that this was very similar to the prior hearing that you just heard, and I want to say that there is a lot of things different between this hearing and that hearing, and it's based on what the planning and zoning and their records. There are many, but it's very close to the coal reservoir, and with the runoff, the Toddlaugue River is a stone's throw from this property. And not only is it very close, it's in the critical area, and so we don't need to jeopardize our drinking water. Also, we have a very low crime rate in our neighborhood, and we want to keep it that way, but it doesn't take any kind of data study to know that if you put a residential establishment in a rural area, it's just gonna be a target for crime. So, if you put in a store, the crime's sure to follow, and we don't want it in our neighborhood. Based on seemingly the representation that has been stated before, we don't want this in our neighborhood. It's not a good match for our neighborhood. There are plenty, we are not definitely underserved. There is a plethora of establishments within three miles that we can get to an interstate junction at I-75 for grocery stores, food products, clothing stores, any and everything we want to get to. We don't need this in our community.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Ashley. I was born and raised in Atlanta, Georgia. I moved in the community March 2017. I live at 1178 Rocky Creek Road. I was advised by the realtor that this was a rural area, and it would never be any type of commercial building. I am a single mother, so I would never would like to have a Dollar General, a laundromat, or any type of building in this area. Like I stated, I highly oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Rick McGahaw. I've lived in the Henry County area off and on for over 50 years, and I've seen this county change. I graduated from Stockbridge High School in 1977. I saw the track home builders, and I'm in the development, and I'm in the building industry, but I live in Henry County to stay away from the Atlanta area and what I have to deal with every day. I'm a block from this property. Again, he is, the applicant has told mistruths. He said he had one driveway going into the house. The people that rent the house use a back driveway that drives up a hill into the back of the house, and they're constantly parked their cars there. I've never seen the water like he showed it, but we've had water, we've had rain for several weeks, so you're gonna get water, you know, flooding. But it floods across, and as the young lady said before me, it floods across the street and down into a gully, and like a swamp area on the four lane, and again, I'm totally against this. Don't see any reason for it, don't see any need for it, and everybody in our community and our general area is totally against it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kay Banks, and my, the backyard of his property is actually the sideyard of my property, and I have been living there, be 31 years come April. And Mr. Greer was talking about giving the county, something about how he gave something away. When they actually paved Rocky Creek Road, I didn't give anything away. Eminent domain came along and took three tenths of my, of my land. My next-door neighbor actually lost three acres, so we're already losing stuff. We're trying to stay residential. We don't need any kind of business. We're talking about the traffic with the school being down there. We have, there's gonna be all kinds of, there's already drivers, and now if you put a store there, there's gonna be even more drivers. I have been witness to many accidents before that light was ever put up at the intersection. The guy that lives on the other side, who has now moved from next door to Mr. Greer's house, was a paramedic, and anytime we would hear crashes, he would go running, we would go running. I personally have stood over several people. I can remember one young lady. I held an umbrella. It was raining. She passed away in front of me. I mean, we don't need any more traffic at that intersection. We already, you know, we're good how we are. We like being residential. Like I said, I've been living there for 31 years, and we need to keep it residential. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hey, I'm Alan Beavers. I live at 1013 on Rocky Creek Road. It's gonna be about three houses up from where the proposed site is, and I just want to state that I'm opposed to this. It seems to me as though in any direction you were to travel, there's gonna be plenty of shopping within about three miles. There's already been a Fred's that's closed down in Hampton because they couldn't support the business, and when we put more businesses in, we're just gonna take business away from those little stores up in Hampton that we use so often, and I'm just opposed. Just, I'm opposed.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm Rita Rice, and I live right at the intersection, and we moved there 25 years ago to get away from the traffic in Stockbridge. We want it to stay rural, and that intersection is extremely dangerous, and a traffic study should be done before anything is approved.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that, our time has expired for those in opposition, so we thank you as well for your patience as well. So, we've now concluded the public hearing aspect of it now, so we do invite the applicant up, and now offer the board any time for questions and comments. So, we, again, invite the applicant back up.
Folks, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
I might have, I might add that I've lived there. Pardon me.
So, we're gonna allow them to, the board now to ask any questions, since we've heard you during the public hearing aspect. So, are there any questions or comments from the board?
I have a few comments.
Yes.
The ZAB has, they requested denial, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with that. I'm not for spot zoning. To me, this is a spot zoning, where a future land use map doesn't even recognize this piece of property for the next 20 years for any type of commercial. Now, as trend moves that way, I mean, we got trend may move from 20, Highway 20, may move from Highway 155, but until then, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to deny your request.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? And I just wanted to, can you just restate the impervious and, you know, all of that aspect of this zoning matter, especially as the recommendation came from ZAB?
Yes, ma'am. The conceptual plan showed 55 percent of the subject property as being impervious.
Okay, all right, I think that's what you stated earlier, so, okay. All right, all right, so we've had a motion and a second, and I, again, hear the concerns about, you know, the impact to our water system. So, now we've offered those that are in favor to deny. Okay? Okay, so that is unanimous. It is denied, okay? We'll now move into the next item. Okay, we'll now move into the next item, which is also related, and it's pertaining to the same subject property at 1018 Hampton Locust Grove Road, and in this zoning matter, COMP AM 1913, the request is to, to actually, let's see, the property consists, the request is actually requesting a rezoning from RA to C2 general commercial for the same subject property. So, again, we'll allow you to begin the presentation.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Chair Wood, Commissioners. This is the associated request before you for the rezoning. We have heard in our previous hearing regarding our future land use map, the future land use map remains rural and residential, which does not support the applicant's request for C2. I would just quickly note a couple of things. This, this request and this location is very different from others that we may have heard tonight, and that it's not located on a state route. No portion of the subject property is already designated for commercial. One could come to the conclusion that rezoning the subject property to C2 is spot zoning because it is completely out of character with the area. From the future land use map, you can see the dark in the central bottom portion of that map. That stands for transportation, communications, utilities. That's land that's in public ownership because of the sensitivity of that area. This subject property is within a protected watershed and a protected... is within a protected watershed, and a portion of this subject property is within the critical area of the watershed. As we had mentioned in the previous hearing, fifty-five percent of this subject property on the concept plan is showing as impervious, and the concept plan requires a reduction in the buffer from forty feet to twenty feet, which could be accommodated administratively and not through a public hearing. So staff has evaluated the applicant's request, and we presented to the zoning advisory board on January the ninth, our recommendation for denial, and the zoning advisory board agreed with staff's recommendation for denial. And the zoning advisory board also recommends to the Board of Commissioners that this request be denied. I'd be pleased to answer questions.
Okay. Are, are there any questions from the board before we begin the public hearing aspect? Okay, seeing none. Um, we will, um, begin the, um, public hearing, and again, those wishing to speak in favor, including the applicant, will be granted a total of ten minutes, and likewise for those wishing to speak in opposition. So at this time, we'll begin the public hearing in favor, uh, for those who are wishing to speak in favor.
Thank you. And I'd like to put the, uh, first of all, that property's been reduced in size to 1.16 acres. I don't have anything.
Pardon me?
That property with the takings by the county has been reduced to 1.16 acres. The building line runs through the existing houses there. I've got a flooding problem because the county didn't come back and put in the permanent flume to get the water away from the house and keep it from flooding at the, at the driveway end. Uh, it doesn't meet the buffer requirements for residential, and, uh, it lends itself to commercial use. We're not talking about a shopping center. We're talking about a single-use tenant that's going to provide service to those communities. And I might go back to what Stacy put in his argument, and I'll just share that with you. Uh, and his criterion number two, the purpose of development of this site is consistent with the purpose of C2, uh, C2 General Commercial, uh, and which is intended to provide locations for a wide variety of retail services used to satisfy the common and frequent needs of the residents in large sections of the county and the traveling public. What I'm, what, what it calls for is having neighborhood commercials, something that's going to serve the people that are there. I did start petition contests, as these other people did. I talked to numerous neighbors, and, and to find somebody who was just violently opposed to it, I did not. I had somebody who intimidated because of these other folks came there wanting them to oppose it, that called me. But I didn't get any petition contests. We don't mean to. Uh, the, and as stated in Stacy's comments, uh, the exceptions you have with the buffers and the impervious areas also can be handled administratively. Can be handled administratively, and it can be dealt with. It's not that, it's not critical. Let's go back to our traffic study, which is also brought up in, in this, uh, portion of the, uh, presentation on the zoning. The, uh, I had questions about the number, uh, or the amount of traffic going in and out, and Stacy and planning zoning put in is going to be twelve hundred fifty-six cars a day. Well, I call the engineer, traffic engineers with Traffic Impact that provided the study, which is required by Henry County. And I says, where did you come up with those numbers? Well, he says, there is none. When you got a single-use, uh, uh, business where, uh, you just, there was nothing there in any of the manuals to pull from, so they went to their, uh, trip generation manual, which is for shopping centers, shopping centers now, general urban, which is city and suburban shopping centers, and that's where they came up with that number. And he said then, and that's the worst it could possibly be, and it still conforms. And he referred then to, uh, uh, his executive summary. Excuse me, I'll get it. And he says, of course, Henry County requires the analysis, which has been bought and paid for. Uh, the, um, traffic count at the, uh, uh, in the morning hours, the worst case, or that, that the maximum of trips in and out would be six entering and three e, leaving in the course of an hour. In the evenings, at, uh, at peak time, would be thirty-one entering, thirty-four exiting, and of course, you're going to have your typical driveways. And the analysis, and he goes on to comment that analysis shows that the intersection is projected, uh, to continue to operate acceptably, uh, after the development. So as far as the traffic goes, that, that is, uh, that is not an issue. I, it is a high-traffic intersection. There's a lot of other things that, uh, uh, taking, are, are taking place there, and it's going to get a lot worse. I hate to jump from over to, uh, the warehouse zoning that's been put in place over at the racetrack that was approved, but you got a serious problem with that truck traffic getting back on I-75. There's no place for it to go from, uh, uh, up and down Terra Boulevard, everything there, it's crowded. May I see the road thing? Along the right-of-way of Hampton, of Hampton Locust Grove Road. This area here has already been widened over a hundred and twenty, well, a hundred and seventy-five feet. Already it's taken. The county's taken this corner, burned these two houses down to widen this intersection here, and make the improvements in intersection when they install the red lights. All of these houses sit back well off the road. Agreed, they may have to take a little frontage here, but they're in the process of condemning the right-of-ways and putting in the sewer lift station. They took all the property they needed. Here, the four-lane, this bridge, which is a death trap. You can hardly get two school buses across it now. Splotched some, a few years back, and I attended a function over in, uh, Hampton, uh, the library, Forts and Library, then you approved. Top priority was do something about that bridge there. Cement trucks run across it, and then if, and trucks are overloaded, as the bridge is going to cave in. Somebody needs to do something about the transportation issues. If you're going to be running more, uh, running eighteen-wheelers, those bridges, that road won't accommodate them. And Highway twenty can't accommodate anymore than what it's got. Uh, I've got, I have serious issues with the property being turned down. I don't consider it spot zoning. I think it's providing, uh, uh, useful service for everybody in this community. Even the people that object to it, I'm sure, are going to find times they're going to need it. You've got schools up the road there. People need to stop and get schools placed with children, pick up meals for, uh, their, their families. They have over a thousand individual items in these Family Dollar and Dollar General stores. Uh, they don't have the delis, they don't have the meat markets, but they take care of all the basic needs of people. Uh, they have a warehouse, a million-square-foot warehouse down in, on Jackson Road in, in Butts County, Georgia. They employ five hundred people that service in that warehouse, help service, uh, Dollar General stores. Those are seven hundred and fifty. And they provide a need. They're not going out there and put a store that that community doesn't need. They do their analysis. They have justification for doing it. Now, I agree that you, you know, you can oppose the spot, call it spot zoning if you want to. It's not spot zoning. That's providing a need for a community and, uh, and providing service to that community. And I think it's fully justified, and I think that's the ideal spot for it. I can't, it's not suitable for residential. The county's literally destroyed it. And, and I think the county needs to do something about it. You can buy the property and restore me. That'd make me just as happy as selling it to somebody else, and that's about where we are. I want to be restored. Uh, the reasonable alternative to the county getting involved is to allow this rezoning. And, uh, Mr. Maxwell, do you have anything you want to add?
I am Mark Barr with Parkside Brokers, and to reiterate, I've never done anything unethical about this deal. Uh, so far as the traffic, I have literally been out at that bridge when I took those pictures, and it is scary. So with what was said previously, yes, there's going to have something to be done. And you see how the county has already purchased all the properties around it. It's coming. There is going to be a four-lane there. That's why the sub, the, uh, traffic light was put in. How much more safer can you have than the traffic light there? Would you rather have a four-way stop? And another thing, when I moved to Henry County, back in the day, I moved to Tunis Road, which was a dirt road. There was nothing there. I have witnessed it, like, well, of course, everybody else has been here for a while. But certain parts of the county are not going to stay immune from a little bit of progress. We're not asking for a shopping center. 1.15 acres, and that's it. And there's more coming, and everybody knows it. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Folks, I'm not here to argue with anybody. I'm not, you know, I get here petition contest, and I think a great deal of my neighbors, I've been out there and lived at, uh, uh, on Rocky Creek Road all of my life, some seventy-three plus years.
And I've never done anything unethical.
Okay, one person at a time, please, and we only have twenty-six seconds, okay?
But that's personal to me as it is rest of these people, and I shop, uh, uh, Dollar Stores, and I find that they have the majority of my basic needs. If I need a steak, I'm going to Publix or go to Aldi's someplace, uh, and, and buy those other fill-ins. But, uh, uh, there's a need in that community, and, uh, I think, uh, I could find no reason to deny it. You call it.
Thank you, sir. Your time is expired, so thank you. So at this time now, we'll invite those who are wishing to speak in opposition to please come forward now, and that group collectively will have, um, ten, ten minutes.
I refrain from bringing the same information back, but, um, again, we, everyone on the petition and those that couldn't make it are in opposition of this rezoning request. Uh, the future land use map speaks for itself. Um, this is not a commercial area, and I can't imagine that this would be approved for the benefit of one investor. And, um, again, the facts do state there is a commercial for sale sign on the property. This is an RA property. The listing is public record. The listing does state that this is a commercial property, and it does list the potential options for someone purchasing. Um, we've received from very reliable professional source that there is a contract for a Dollar General on the adjacent property. Again, for the benefit of one investor, this is a rural area, and we again respectfully ask that we, you keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Jean Kessinger. I live at 323 Rocky Creek Road. I moved to the Rocky Creek area in the nineties, and what I've noticed is, is that the applicant has caused his own renting problems by failing to perform those normal duties to keep the property in good condition with curb appeal. Uh, examples are roofing, landscaping, painting, gutters, general lawn care, including grading and parking and driveway areas. The flooding, we have to grade our driveway, and we don't charge the county or blame the county for the rain that's befallen on our land. Um, the subject property is located within the limited development area of the Tualagga Watershed Protection District with a portion in the water-critical area. That's really a very special kind of a classification. If the rezoning requests are approved, they will set a precedent destroying established rural residential neighborhoods' protection of the real properties and damage the surface limitations intended to protect the drinking water reservoir, as well as keeping the reservoir safe from contamination. The development of the subject property under C2 zoning is not consistent with the zoning trends of the area or with the future land use map, which intends for this area to remain rural residential. Many of the neighbors in the general area have spoke. It's consistent with the denial. We pray that you do just that, deny it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Ashley. As I stated earlier, I was born and raised in Atlanta, so I particularly wanted to live in a rural area and raise my daughter in a rural area that would have low crime. When I was looking at communities, the realtor told me that this area would always stay a rural area. Hopefully, it will remain that way, as she stated, because, as I stated earlier, I am a single mother, and when you build things in the area, I know it will increase the crime rate. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Again, the applicant argues his own point, as he did last time. Traffic is an issue. We got Sun City just a few miles down the road at Rocky Creek, and they come out of there to go to work in Atlanta, some of the retirees, and it backs up from that red light to my driveway, which is about two blocks from the intersection. I sit on seventy-six acres there, ride horses there, enjoy it. The young lady that just left the podium lives across the street from me. We all take care of each other over there. We all watch out for one another over there, and we do not want this in our community. There's nobody that stepped up here that said they want this. He says there are several people that do, but everybody in this area is opposed against it. Everybody in the area does not want it. We don't need it. We can drive four minutes to one. We can drive five minutes to a grocery store. We don't want this in this area. It's, it's not zoned for it. It doesn't need to be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Steve Jacobs. Uh, myself and my family, we purchased our home back in 2017 at the intersection of the, uh, request of, uh, of the request of the rezoning. And just the thought of having a Dollar General or a gas station or a laundromat just, just makes us cringe, because it's not wanted. It's not, it's a mismatch within that area, and I just want, uh, it to be known that I highly, highly oppose this rezoning. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Tamby Mallett. We have, uh, I live on 1515 Hampton Locust Grove Road. We've had the property since late eighties. We built the house in 1994. We have lived there since. We, when we bought the house or had the house built, we've never had any grocery store, anything near us, because that's what we wanted. We do not want any kind of Dollar General, any kind of convenience store, any kind of laundromat. We wish it to stay rural. Everything else anybody else has said is what we really want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Marty Mallett. I'm her husband, as you know. But we bought that property back in the late eighties, like she said, built the house in ninety-four. Well, Hampton, or Rocky Creek and Simpson Mill were both dirt roads. You might every now and then see a little traffic. Now, it's, every now and then you might not see a little traffic. But they're talking about eighteen-wheelers going up that road back and forth. If you go to the beginning of that road at 155 or at 2081, there are signs that say there should be no trucks on that road. They don't enforce that. And along with that, we don't need them coming in there filling up a Dollar General store. The road's not made for that. So.
Thank you.
I'm Tina Brooks. Um, this area is single-family homes. This is inconsistent with any of the area around there. We don't want it. By the many people that you've heard over and over and over, you're hearing the same things. We don't want this in our community. The plan and zoning have given you a very detailed issue after, after notation, after notation, after notation about the water, the, um, zoning that's going, all, all of the different items that they do. That's their job. We pay them to do it, and I think it would be, um, there's no reason to deviate from that. They, besides the fact that all of those things, they don't meet the criteria for this zoning, and the neighborhood doesn't want it, I think it's a no-brainer. We don't want this.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm Rita Rice, and I live on Hampton Locust Grove Road. We do not need any more traffic in the area, so therefore, we do not need any commercial properties. It does feed into the watershed, which feeds into the Tualagga, which is at the very beginning of the Tualagga, which feeds into Long Branch reservoir, and we don't want our waters polluted. So therefore, we are opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rex Butler. Um, I'm, I'm opposed, um, because of the previous mentioned points of, uh, you know, the, the county's land use program or plan, uh, the watershed issues, traffic issues, the buffer issues, um, the character of the area, the, you know, operating hours of the store, you know, I mean, you have the lights from, and the traffic and the noise from a store, um, you know, in the, in the evening when you're trying to, you know, when you're at home, and where, um, and property values. So that, I'm opposed on, on those points. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kay Banks. As I stated before, that property, that's my side yard. So I'll have, whatever he decides to put there is going to be my side neighbor, and I didn't move there to have a Dollar General or a laundromat, whatever it is, put right there. I'm very much opposed to it. The county has, the county is opposed to it. We thought we were done with this, but he's still fighting. And as far as the house, there is a house there, and all he's got to do is fix it up. There's tenants there all the time. Fix it up. You're not out of anything. You've got the property. Fix it up. You've got a tenant. I'm opposed. Please leave my neighborhood rural like it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak for the time remaining?
I'm Frank Austin. I live on Rocky Creek Road. As many of the neighbors have said, we just plain don't want a commercial development in this area. The truck traffic, as one gentleman pointed out, on Hampton Lucas Grove Road, on Rocky Creek Road, which is all residential, is terrible. The police can't do, can't enforce it or won't enforce it. We don't need any more traffic. We don't need a commercial property on watershed land. We've got enough problems with the drinking water and environment now, so I ask you to deny it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, this does conclude our public hearing aspect, so we do request the applicant to please come forward now, and we'll now open it up for discussion from the board. Okay, are there what questions or comments from the board?
Any comments?
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay?
No.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, it is denied. Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
We'll now move into our next agenda item regarding the City of McDonough annexation in District Three. Oh, did we table that one? This is regarding Campground Road. So anyone making the presentation on that, or did we table? Oh, I'm sorry. Stacy, I'm sorry. Okay. All right, well, thank you. Oh, and it does say that you are presenting. I apologize. I'm sorry. Okay, so you may proceed.
This is information only. This is regarding a resolution that was adopted by the Board of Commissioners on November the fifth of last year, and it's regarding the subject property at 1330 Campground Road. This was an annexation that the board had objected to because the proposed development was not supported by the future land use map. So this location is on the south side of Campground Road, immediately across from the intersection with Brian's Drive there. This is the area that was intended to be annexed into the City of McDonough. The original concept plan for this development was not supported by the future land use map designation of low-density residential, which supported up to two dwelling units per acre net. So staff has worked, staff and the Commissioner of the District, we've.
Excuse me just a moment. I'm sorry, there's some conversation going on in the back of the chambers. Could you please maybe step out to have your conversations as we continue with the board meeting, please? It's too much, excuse me. Can you please step out, please? Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. In short, Madam Chair, the resolution from November says that if the applicant can amend their concept plan to a proposal that is supported by our future land use map, that the Board of Commissioners will not object to the annexation, and the applicant has done that. And so that's what's in your exhibit books, and that's what is shown on our overhead tonight. And so we just wanted to update the board that the applicant has complied with that resolution from November.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions? This is information only. Okay. All right. There are no questions from the board.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the next item regarding the resolution to withdraw the objection from the seat of McDonough, that one was tabled, as we stated earlier. So we will now move into our public comment section now, and again, this is the time that we allow citizens to voice their counter-related opinions. Each will be given five minutes. We ask, please, that those speaking to speak to the board, not individuals, and we ask that the board does not interrupt. So at this time, how many do we have that have signed up?
Chair, when we were in executive session, they signed up. There were twelve that signed up, but four of them spoke during the Kellytown zoning, and they were for the zoning matters, so there's eight.
Okay, so there's eight now to speak, okay? All right, so will you call them at least, you know, maybe one, and then let them know the one that's coming behind and continue to that, so that we can make sure that we accommodate everyone? So thank you.
Bill Tony is first, and Larry Maury will be behind him.
Okay, thank you.
Bill Tony, McDonough, Georgia. I just wanted to let you all know that if you don't understand the First Amendment and how y'all are supposed to let us speak, this is a government. So I gave you one. You won. Please understand it. We had talked about, excuse me, a piece of property over at Nash Farm Rental Property that was being rented for $200 a month. I've had people to call me and ask me if I threw, if I was wanting to throw a homeless vet out, and this is a picture of the house. And I'm not wanting to throw anybody out. I've had several people to say something, and I just wanted to clarify that that house is county property. And that now y'all are addressing the issues on. You know, it's kind of funny that I don't draw a salary, y'all draw a salary. I bring up issues about the leases and everything else. Now, y'all, thank you, you're on board with it, but I don't come up here and get a salary. I came to a town hall meeting that Ms. Clemmons put on here, and I was, after being here a few minutes, I was expecting cheerleaders to come out. It looked more like a political rally, and I was just wondering, did the county pay for all that? We had, we had all kinds, it was just like a political rally. All right, the City of McDonough, I think I've told you all what I see. I say something about it. When we have this right here, this young lady, she put that there in memory of her grandmother, and I think that's probably one of the nicest things that anybody could do. It's downtown McDonough. You need food, you take food. If you have extra food, you put it in the cabinet. So I look, I'm going around the corner, and I see a fountain. That's part of it. But this is, this fountain, I'm wondering, who does it belong to? Well, we had somebody to donate it to the city, and guess what? We've probably got over $200,000. We have manpower to keep this thing going. It's in memory of somebody's parents. Now, we had, I went by there the other day, and there was four guys, I'm sure, as well over $200 an hour, working on that piece of property. There's a light meter on it, so we're paying for the power, we're paying for the water, we paid for the sod, we paid for everything. Most people don't even know that it's there. Like I said, it was donated to the city, but that's the way properties are, and that's the, when you get parks and all that stuff, you may get it free, but then you got to maintain all of it, and it comes out of the general fund. I'm just saying, y'all need to be really, really better with all our money.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Maury. The next two speakers are Pat Boston and then Bubba Coffey.
Okay, Mr. Maury.
He's not here.
Okay, so, okay. Okay, and then, okay, thank you.
Commissioners, first of all, I want to commend you. This is not an easy job, and this is not just because you denied the motion for Kellytown. But I know that it's difficult to strike a balance between Henry County and, at the same time, have development. But as we have, but I just need to think about this. As the CIP presentation was given, we asked ourselves, how can we continue to have all this development when we don't really even have a funded capital improvement plan? There truly needs to be a moratorium in development in Henry County, in my opinion, at least for eighteen months, until we have more thorough planning in our county to address some of the concerns that come with all this development. And I would all agree from discussions, we all love our county, and we want to maintain our standard of living, and we want to keep our community rural. I think that's been a common threat throughout, and how do you strike that balance? I know it's difficult, but as in the words of my commissioner, and I quote, "Build a progressive county through smart growth and development and strengthen the county's infrastructure." But at the same time, we need to keep the character of Henry County alive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm back up here again. I was here at the end of September, October, about the wrecker service, and y'all told me, just give us time, Mr. Coffey. First of the year, we're changing everything. Can y'all name one thing that you've changed? Nothing. You said, just give us the first of the year, new contract, new everything, coming out. Hadn't done anything. I mean, I talked to Major, that's on the, that was, the wrecker stuff was given to, he didn't even know that it had been sent off to anyone to have it done. He's not even familiar with that, and he's supposed to be over it with the police department. That was this evening when I got in here. I mean, y'all tell me something, and then it ain't no good. I mean, I call up here, and then I'm accused of harassing people, you know? All I ask for is answers. Ain't nothing been changed. I tried to get in touch with the police chief, called his office, tried to set up a meeting. Well, then the assistant manager called me and said there wasn't no need in talking to him, because he was his boss. I think as a taxpayer, if I want to speak to someone like the police chief or whatever, I should be able to talk to him without having to go through the county manager's office. And I just, I'm just, you know, they said there wasn't going to be a wrecker committee, there wasn't going to be this, you know? They're going to leave it up to one people, one person to make the decision. When the 9/1 director had it before, he had a wrecker committee, and he didn't have to send it off to have stuff done. The wrecker committee decided on a lot of it instead of leaving it to one person, because you don't ever know. I'm not saying, but I have seen people pay it off in this kind of business, you know? But I'm just asking for answers. I think, you know, five months, somebody ought to let me know something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next two speakers are Robert Kolpak and Carl Swinson.
Evening, Board.
Chair.
Robert Kolpak, McDonough, Georgia. Let you know to see Click Fix, it works real well. Dead deer was cleaned up within three hours, and the car parts, after reporting it, so thank you for that. On Fairview's properties are the parks. We've got the demolition of property, and we've got a police station going over that way, Publix Works, but then we're also going to put soccer fields there. And on top of, we have a rec center on Austin Road and close to Patilla Road on Fairview, we have Hidden Valley Park that, as we know, needs $400,000 worth to repair it. We also have Village Park that has football fields, and I'm just, I'm not understanding why a public facility center would add soccer fields, or why we use some commercial land to do it when we had about a hundred acres sitting in Hidden Valley to use, and, or we had the property that was vacated by Publix ten years ago, could have been a police station, and instead now we're building this big building. I don't think there's a real need, but the bigger question is, the kids, we're worried about the kids, you know, we're going to spread them out all through the world, and different parks have different things going on. It's real tough for parents to have two kids, one's playing soccer, one's playing baseball or football, and I'd rather have them all in one complex. With Hidden Valley, you have a hundred acres available, and I know I hear in the back part of Hidden Valley, there's rock, but I assure you, in the front part, there's four or five homeowners, and it's level lots. So just a thought about, you know, what's done. I know Cochrane Park has been, is in repair, but soccer field at one park, football field in another, baseball field in another, and all within, you know, three, four, it's just a big spread for the kids. And with a public facilities, also having soccer fields didn't make any sense to me. And on our roads, not only are they leaking, but in some roads in our area, they're full. So thank you for putting money aside to address the roads, but that one, that one thing that's, you know, would help out, that interchange, Bethlehem Road or something, man, if we could just get that pushed through to, you know, eliminate all that truck traffic, because if you, if you ever drive down 155 at, in the afternoon or in the morning, Saturday, Sunday, it would be good. And the last thing I want to close on is Life in Henry. When you add an apartment complex to where there's dollar stores and businesses, it's really not a work-and-play community if you don't have sidewalks and a safe area for people to walk. So anybody that's moving in these apartments are going to try to walk across to all these restaurants. Good luck to them. I don't see it working out too well. There's not a real good plan, so you can't really call it a work-and-play community. That's all I got tonight. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Carl Swinson, and I'm up on Thurman Road. First off, I'd like to ask the Commissioners if they'll take a quick look at the East Atlanta Road, just a little north of that big box or small box, Dollar General. There's a very big pothole there. Bruce, if you would, please. It's bad. Also, I want to address the 800-pound gorilla in the room. All of this stuff we have going on, nobody's talking about how we are going to be paying for all the lawsuits that come. I'm looking at three right now that are going to be pretty big ones. Now, two of them, I believe, are going to be federal, so you won't have the benefit of a local judge being able to help you out, so that's going to be trouble. But one of them is probably going to be held locally, and that is the deal with the Fairview Park, the new one we just put up there, Village Park. Nice park, no problem, but if you're Willie Hamler, not so nice, because all of the water, whenever you get a rain like this, just eats his property away. I was, I was over there last week and looked at it. It is a pothole city on the property. It's not that he's putting any weight on it, but it's just sinking, and he's got a big cavern through it now, which never was there before. The previous administration promised, the man who owned that property, on his deathbed, that they would not change the water flow there. I know that you guys don't really know about it, or maybe even care about that. I know that you guys don't really know about it or maybe even care about that, but, you know, it's kind of a solemn promise. Anyway, that suit is going to be going on, and I hope that, I hope that we get some resolution on there. I've been trying to work on that for quite some time. The other thing is, we've got an issue with the, with the jail. There's some really serious stuff going on. I think I emailed you a case over there that's going to, that's going to be bad. That's going to be real bad. I won't get into specifics right now, but there's some abuse that's happening there. And you know that I've always stood up for our police and our sheriffs and everybody in law enforcement. I do. But there's always going to be bad apples in any organization. We've got some. We better take care of it. Because when you talk about a budget, how are you going to talk about a budget when you've got all of these cases out there that you're going to have to settle on? Are you going to borrow money to pay on that? I don't think so. But you will raise taxes. We can't have that. We're tired of having you dip into our pockets. And if you think that this is something like free money with this CIB or whatever it is, it's not. We pay for it. It sounds good to you. You'll be able to get a few things? Great. Okay? But we have, we have budgets for a reason. Not to break them, to go under them, not over them. You want to make the people of the county happy? Spend less, not more than you've allotted. Boy, that'll really, that'll really be something different, to have a balance, to have a positive balance in that checkbook at the end of the year. Can you imagine? Well, the people here can't, but they'd like to. They'd really like to. Get a grip on these lawsuits, because they're coming, and they're going to be bad. And if we don't do something about what's happening over there at the jail right now, it's going to be worse than bad, because you're going to have the feds involved. That's all I want to say today.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Thomas Champion, and the last speaker after that will be Mark Paxton.
Madam Chair and other Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to speak before you. This is my first meeting of this type to ever attend, so I've learned a lot tonight listening to what is taking place. I do have to applaud you for your efforts to plan for the future in this county. It's definitely something that needs to be done. And specifically, I guess my interest is the Kellytown area, because I see it changing pretty rapidly after I've moved into the counties, which was about eight years ago. But Kellytown, there's many things about it. The area was very rural when I first moved in. Many of the homes along the area are on large pieces of property. Five acres, I would say, to 10 acres was probably what was initially there. New subdivisions started to come in with three-acre lots, and now what we're seeing is one-acre lots and a lot more density throughout the area. Kellytown's kind of in two watersheds coming together there, the Big Cotton Indian Creek and South River. So all this development is creating additional flooding around that area. So although you say that you have no influence over what the Henry County Water Authority chooses to do, I would suggest to you that it would be very beneficial to look into that area and what can be done. Because if developments going into this area, the flooding that was shown in the Kellytown area and one of the pictures of the people who were trying to get sewer right-ofways through that, that water has to go into the sewer system. And we don't want an area where we end up with a sewer system that overflows like the Atlanta sewer system does. So future planning needs to include water runoff for all these developments that are taking place. And just to give you an idea of the impact that has had, if you look at some of the roads and the bridges that are in our area, there was a bridge on Hemp Hill Avenue that was washed out in a flood probably more than a year ago, and it's been, not been replaced at this point. That road's been closed. Selfridge Drive at the end of Miller's Mill Road runs through to Crumbly Road, another bridge washed out in that area recently that has cut traffic from going through that way. So all the development is having an impact, and it's having an impact because of water in the area. It'll also have an impact because of sewer, as was mentioned. So these things need to be considered in whatever plans are developed for our area. And I highly encourage you to look at that integrated plan. I do like the fact that you're looking into the future, what the plans are for the county, that you have a plan, but it's being modified, obviously, and it will continue to be modified. It's very obvious that a bunch of feeder roads are being developed into the county coming off of Interstate 75. Just one of the most recent examples was Jodico Road being extended into Campground Road. So that's obviously going to be a feeder in some major development. Kellytown Road is not a feeder off the interstate, so development in that area should be considered more carefully, and I highly encourage you to do that. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
All right. Thank you.
Mark Paxton is the last speaker.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, I think we've acknowledged all of those who did sign up for public comments, and we thank you for that time. We'll now move into our next agenda item, which relates to the approval for our minutes for the January 7th regular Board of Commissioners meeting and also the January 21st regular Board of Commissioners meeting. Were there any changes or revisions to those minutes? Seeing none here and none, the floor is now open for approval of those minutes.
Move to approve.
Okay. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. The minutes are approved. So at this time, we're now moving to any Commissioner comments. Are there any Commissioner comments at this time? Commissioner Clemmons?
I just, I know that usually on our morning meetings, and this is for Sherri and Brad, you guys do the recognition of the staff, for the tenures or whatever we're recognizing for. But I don't want to miss this opportunity to thank you all and give you all your deserving recognition for how you have worked hard. And I just look at you guys, at what time is it now? 10:17, and we got here, I got here at 4 o'clock, but you guys have been here all day. You have families at home, you have children at home, you have spouses at home, and you got a big job ahead of you with what we did tonight. But I want to give you a recognition and say that I have seen you retain talent, get more talent, and move the county forward, and that's what we have to grade you on. And so the next couple of years, we've got to make sure that we get this stuff done, and that was a big task on you. Y'all got a lot of work to do to get these projects on the shelf. And whatever I can do as a Commissioner to support that and make sure you guys have what you need, please let me know. But I just wanted to give you all your recognition, because tonight was huge, and it was big. And like I said, the last week that we were in the meeting, I saw you guys like, here we are again, here we are again. But I just wanted to give you public thank you and give you the recognition for the well-deserved work that you guys have done, and so thank you to both of you.
Commissioner Thomas?
I just wanted to thank the administration and the management as well for bringing on the Transportation Director, the Parks and Recreation Planner or Director, and for the marketing and branding person I found in there as well. And those were three key things that I know I fought for to get here in this county, because you needed them here to help us take this county in the right direction. And when I saw them all, I said to County Manager Matthews, "I thank you," and then say, "For what?" She just said, "Well, I saw the thank you, I guess I'll take it." And I said, "I want to tell you thank you, because you've got these people in place, and I'm looking for great things that are going to happen in Henry County." It's great when we can make decisions for the county when it is about the county. That's the key thing. What do we do to take this county forward? And you have experts in place for us to refer back to in planning and zoning, engineers, that makes a huge difference to me. And that's what I try to do, is use those experts to make the right decisions. So again, thank you guys so much for getting them on board, and I'm looking forward to great things from them.
Any other comments? Okay. Well, thank you, and thank you for those comments. Regarding our upcoming meetings and events, February 24th is a called Budget Workshop meeting. The BLC will receive a briefing from the cluster leaders and department heads regarding the budget at 9 o'clock in the community room. And then on February 25th is a called Budget Workshop meeting, again, with the elected officials at 9:00 a.m. in the community room. March 3rd at 9:00 a.m. is our regular Board of Commissioners meeting. March 17th at 6:30 p.m. is a regular Board of Commissioners meeting as well. So if there's no other business for the board, we'll now accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Move to seven.
And a second. All in favor? Consider ourselves adjourned. And thank you all. Thank you all for being here and those tuning in.